All this media door bigger, excuse me, Big Bear Regional Waste Water Agency of regular board meeting April twenty fourth twenty twenty four and let's continue to lead us in the pleasure.
Please join me in honoring our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion for approval of the agenda? I'll say even second, what call?
Director Russo, Director Segovia.
Aye.
Director Walsh.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Harret.
Aye. And we need our.
Only four on zoom.
Okay, um. Then I would just like to, for the minutes, if it's possible to excuse.
Yeah.
I don't think it's worth.
Yes.
Look at that.
Can you hear me now? No. It's not fancy.
There is no sound.
We'll just pause for a moment till we see if we can fix this, otherwise we'll have to speak very loudly.
You're gonna restart it. Technology.
That's not the case.
You probably have a few people that would be just fine with that.
Get their mutuals.
Oh, well, never mind.
Well, for this part, I'll speak very loudly. What I'd like to do, if it's possible, and I know that it's not normal procedure for us, that is to excuse a board member as a death in James Miller's immediate family, which he is attending to and cannot be at this meeting. Again, I don't know if there's a procedure for excusing him, but in the minutes, if there is, I would appreciate that. If not, I'm sure he'll understand.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have the minutes reflect.
Okay, thank you, excuse.
Will it still remain?
No. Okay, I'll speak loudly and I'll ask our speakers to speak loudly. This will be the public forum section. I don't believe I have any cards for public forum at this moment. If you have to speak in public forum, please fill out a card, bring it forward. Public testimony is permitted at this time only. I sent kind of items and other items not listed in the posted agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the agency. State law prohibits the agency from taking action on any items not listed on the posted agenda. Public comment on items on the listed posted agenda will be taken at the time each item is called for discussion and general discussion.
Nope, there doesn't seem to be any. Is anybody that would like to speak on anything that's not on the posted agenda?
Okay, we'll move on now to presentations, which we don't have any information, committee reports. Item six A, general manager's report.
So I'm gonna speak very loudly on six A. I just wanted to point out one thing to the board specifically. If you look at the chart in the back or in your packet that looks like this, you'll notice in 2023, there was a lot of, a lot of flow because we had all those storms. What that does is that actually most of that flow is coming from INI. And the city had quite a, quite a bit of INI, so it did get reflected in the amount of flow that was coming here to the, to the plant. And it was actually pretty consistent with all of the agencies sent a lot of flow our way. But you can see how big the flow was and it does affect the rate structure that you'll see from your agency. And what that does is basically our, our rate structure is set up for right now, this, this year was about eighty percent fixed and twenty percent variable. And there's a specific number of fixed cost and variable cost of the, the other items and of having to do with more with the flow rates. And it did actually affect the city of Big Bear Lake's rate structure a little bit. So just wanted to point that out, just in case there are questions about that. I know you'll be considering the, the rates later on or the Prop two eighteen later on at the city. So just wanted to make sure that you had an explanation for me about that. Um. We'll go on to six B.
Just to explain for everybody, could you explain what INI?
Okay, so INI is infiltration and intrusion. So basically when it rains or it snows, our plant is inundated a lot with what rain or, or snow melt that gets into the pipes and actually ends up at our plant. And the most of, most of the agencies up here suffer from INI. So a lot of that rainwater gets into those pipes either through people hooking up their storm systems from their roof structures into the, into their sewer lines, or we just have leaky pipes. All those things can happen. And it ends up at the plant and we're inundated with a lot of flow rate. And, and so it does impact our, our ability to treat because of that, you know, high flow rates that we see. And it's, and we could tell that because based on the temperature of the water and we can tell that based on the concentration levels of, of BOD that we see in the flow. So that's how we can tell what, how much INI we're getting as opposed to regular wastewater. Hopefully that helps.
Do you enjoy the BOD?
BOD, bio, biological oxygen demand. And that's a, that's a test. It's a five day test. We test on the demand of the of the, the water for oxygen, basically the bugs that are in there. And that's, and that's what the BOD stands for, is biological oxygen demand on, on, in the wastewater. So. Um, the next one is, is primarily is on the replenished Big Bear project. We decided to go ahead and split out the replenish project. We wanted to give a, you know, a constant update of where we are with the project and the different things that took place during the last month. So that way the board was well aware of those items. And, and so we decided to split it out from the general managers' report on a regular basis and, and added the, the second report because it was getting pretty healthy. In addition, we added some new charts in here so that way the board could track the expenditures on the project as long, and in addition to the, the costs and expenditures that are in here. So there is some, some new tables in here for the board to, to review and look at. The other thing I wanted to point out was in the last page, you'll have a letter that looks like this. This was one of the letters that we were waiting for that MWD required to, to further consider a, an agreement. And so this is one of the letters that we were waiting for, which is a complete, a, a, a complete application letter from, from the regional board, which is really good news for us. And it just, just gets us that, that much closer to a permit. So.
Another question for you.
Sure.
It took a long time to get there, but I presume the Santa Ana Water Quality Board has been inundated with lots of applications for these type of projects.
That's correct.
Do you know how many? I've heard Highland is one that's.
Highland is, Highland, we handed out a chart a while back and I don't remember, I think. Did you remember how many were on this?
No, they were in the permit process.
Okay, there were some that were in the permit process and there were some that were actually already constructed. I thought the number was around forty, some forty-four projects, I think overall that were either in permit process or, or completed the process. But yes, the, the Santa Ana, I'll tell you the, this, the, the project in Highland got their project, they got their permit three weeks before they started up the project. So the, the draft came before, obviously we get a draft before and we will too. But the actual permit didn't get issued to them until about three weeks before they had actually started up the, the whole project. So just to kind of give you an idea like when you would expect that.
The point is a lot, there have been a lot in the pipeline.
Lot on the pipeline and, and a lot of projects in the state of California for very similar types of projects.
Okay, thank you.
And then I guess that, that concludes. If there's any other questions with regard to the either report?
Question?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
I noticed Bridget sent out under brochure, the most recent April brochure. And went from two thousand acre feet now at twenty-two hundred, which before it was two thousand, maybe eventually twenty-two hundred. Was that to kind of meet up with this new ten percent less expectation by twenty forty?
That, that, that twenty-two hundred is, takes into consideration, I mean, there's a couple of things about that number. But the twenty-two hundred allows for some growth in the whole process. The other thing about the twenty-two hundred is it, it, it does depend on the recovery rate that we get from the brine minimization process. So we're expecting, we're expecting over two, over two thousand. We're, we're telling everybody basically two thousand because we're expecting about that twenty-one hundred range. And it allows for the growth that we're expecting over, you know, over the, the life of the project, you know, or yeah, I think it's, it's designed for twenty-two hundred. Just, just to allow for big growth.
And then you just mentioned INI.
Yes.
You have the January, February, March figures, but that's flow.
That's correct.
And the other charts has shown us as forty-seven percent impact on the plant from the city of Big Bear Lake, forty-eight from CSD, five percent from the county. Now, is that EDUs or the combination of EDU and?
No, that is, that's the percent of the total flow. I don't know how that.
Are we using three years?
So depending on what you're looking for, the billing structure, it's a, for the billing structure, it's, it's gonna go off. She's gonna turn it off. Yeah, for the billing structure, when we, when we, when we do our rate structure, we take the three-year average, right? That's typically what we do. But when we show you the, the chart that we were, that we were looking at, that is, that, it shows several years in there, but the, but they're, they're depicted in there with the different colors and that tells you what year we're actually looking at. Not quite sure. Did I leave it in yet? So.
Four colors for you.
There's, yeah, there's four colors in here showing this year and the, and the current year, right? Because we don't, we don't have all of Aprils, Don, May or June, they're not shown in here, right? So you'll see all the other, all the other months in here and the, and the, the flow rate. But when it comes to the, like the specifically for the city or CSD or the county, you take the total flow rates and you divide it by, you divide it by their amount. So you take their amount and then divide it by the total flow. That makes sense.
Just, I want to clarify before we got later in the discussion.
Yes. Yes. I understand. You bet.
Any other questions? You have more to report?
Nope, that's it. That was my presentation.
I had no public comments, cards on this. I thought it was.
Six B. Did we just do six B?
We just did six B.
Part of six B.
Joyce?
Well, I have a question actually about these projects you're talking about all around San Bernardino and what they have to do with Big Bear and why are we being lumped in with them? I, I just kind of hope I could know about that, but that could be, because if that has something to do with replenish, I know the CSD has voted against the funding for it, but for some reason it's still alive. But I can tell you that I've heard that people in Big Bear Lake do not want the water in their lake. So we have another stopper. It's not just Big Bear City that doesn't want to use their water. We don't, Big Bear Lake doesn't want the water in the lake. I've talked to many people who have voted out. And also the ad in the paper also reflected that. But also, I would also like to know which one of you have taken an oath of office to the state of California, because that is something that's important if you're making decisions for us, that you're taking an oath to our constitution. So also, I've been trying to talk to the Forest Service and they haven't returned my call because this water project that you have, we need to replenish. We need to do everything that it claims it's going to do by just replenishing the ground, by putting it back in the ground. So as I understand, state of California says we can't put the, our sewer back in the ground unless it's quote purified. So we're supposed to spend a hundred thousand, a million dollars on this plant to purify our water so that we can actually do anything with it, which is totally BS in my opinion. And I'm, I'm thinking the Forest Service is the one that's gonna get it back. So they're the ones that should decide the quality of the purity of the water if we put it back in the watershed where it belongs. We also have people in Baldwin Lake who are claiming their wells are drying up because CSD has taken all their water. It doesn't come down, and I can testify to the fact that there used to be a really, a lot of water coming down in the Baldwin Lake before CSD started taking it back in the sixties and seventies. Because I remember them putting in the plant to, to take all that water. And so it's been drying up and it would be awesome, I know in my area at least, to replenish the water for the dry area because the creek's not there anymore. That should brought my glasses. Also, I think if we do need to keep the water here, then we need to talk to Sacramento about doing, being able to do the leach lines because we know that's how it purifies the water. I mean, it's been done for centuries. So I don't understand why California's gonna allow them saying, oh, you can't do that anymore. It's just a bunch of BS. It's a bunch of way for you guys to make money. If you're gonna send, spend a hundred million dollars on the project, the state says we have to, then they have to pay for it. They're not gonna force us to mortgage our homes for this ridiculous governmental centralized program. Okay, let's see. And what level does it really have to be pure? And also I want to know about all these charts, if they're available online so that we can go and look at them. The ones that you've been discussing are they online? Okay, I will look them there. And let's see. I think that's it. You're not allowed to answer my questions.
I'm just gonna make one for comments with one of your first comments and that had to do with the Santa Ana Water Quality Board. We're actually part of the Santa Ana Water Quality system. Our water travels that way. So we're actually the headworks essentially of. I'm sorry?
If the water stays in Big Bear, then it won't be a part of that either, right?
Uh, no, it still is part of that. Absolutely still is part of that. Well, I, I just want, I just need to make a comment towards you regarding that. But yeah, yeah, perfect. Okay, I don't have any of the cards on this period of the subject. Is this?
Matt, did you want to talk about this stuff on the replenished Big Bear report or the next report nine A about the committee meeting? Okay.
Okay.
No, no others.
Okay, with that, we're moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar will be conducted with one motion of, at the appropriate time will be no separate discussion of these items. If the detailed discussion is necessary, any governing board member when you request an item be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Is there any, does my vote remove anything from the consent card?
Seven A and seven B.
Seven A, seven B. Larry Walsh, any other items? Look for a motion to approve the balance. Move the second, what call?
Director Russo?
We will call on this one.
Yeah, yeah, I think this is a vote.
Okay.
Director Russo, Director Segovia.
Aye.
Director Walsh.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Harret.
Aye. Okay, board member Walsh, seven A.
And public comment, there was evidence that Michael Beveridge stated it likely cost forty, fifty million to heat sending bottled water to the San Antonio. Do you have any support for that statement? Any idea where that came from?
All right, just as chairman, let me jump in. If there was a substantial change to something that, that we voted on, that was his opinions, a lot of opinions that end up in that section of the, of the minutes.
But they are becoming part of the minutes.
There are a lot of opinions in the minutes.
Okay, then, to our party's seven. Applicable agenda, item three, the vote was Eric Miller, vote Washington Green. Vote should be replaced by Segovia, agree, and votes by Russo.
I apologize, let me close changes.
Over nine A. It talks about in-kind services would be Big Bear Municipal Water District's share. If you take the twenty-two hundred acres that the brochure says is going to end up in the lake at the price of the letter of intent, that's over one point nine million dollars. Is that what their in-kind's going to be worth?
Okay, so the, I, I can only tell you what the in-kind, I'm sorry, what, what a.
Tell us where you are.
So nine A. Nine A. So nine A. Second paragraph. So the, the discussion, one of the discussion items were whether, so we had talked to MWD in the past about in-kind services when it comes to the monitoring and testing. And there is a.
Before we go too far, is there a correction you're suggesting? Because we're on minutes. It's not really agendas. So do you see a correction?
The statement is the in-kind services will include monitoring, testing and offset program. In-kind to be suggest equivalent rather than cash. That's what I'm questioning is the in-kind worth one point nine million dollars?
I guess, I, and, and native word, you can help with this. I don't know. I'm happy to answer the question with regard to that, but if this is not the, probably the appropriate.
Yeah, we're just making corrections for the minute. Is it a point? So if it's a substantive discussion over a matter, we need to wait until the nine eight to talk about it at that time. Well, this is ninety of the minutes.
Yes.
Yeah, we're just creating the March twenty seventh. Right, so if, if that's what was accurately said on the March twenty seventh, then that's what the minutes were planned. Then I have no further comment.
Okay, so we need a, a motion on seven A and seven B, the minutes.
With the corrections of the.
Board members?
The board members' corrections?
Yes. Actually, you got was just, so it's you. Okay.
So it comes.
I'm not going to make a motion because I do not approve those minutes. Okay, I'll make the motion on seven A. There are second and seven A, the minutes. No, I guess this motion fails. I don't know how you handle a failed minutes motion. Never had a.
Bring it back next time.
Okay, and if there are, if there are corrections, if you see something in the minutes that are not accurate as you remember them, bring them up ahead at times so the recordings can be reviewed. So then Larry, did you handle seven B in your question? Dispersment?
Questions about the dispersments, but if it's not properly agendized as such, then I assume I'm not.
No, no, it's inaccurate. The minutes are different.
I mean, it all comes, this comes down to what we, what the agency paid during this, during this period. That's what, that's what those are.
Okay, question in this first was, two different checks went out to Water Systems Consulting. Is that for replenish Big Bear or something else? And will you in future segregate those or will all figures be one together?
Okay, let me just hold, let me just look at the two payments on here. I believe there are, they're at a different pay schedules. That's why they were, but let me just confirm that.
Twenty-three, nine, forty-four is on page two and twenty-three, nine, eighty-one is on page three.
So I have on page two, I have twenty-one, five, eleven for Water Systems Consultant. Okay, I see. And what was, I'm sorry, what was the next one?
Yeah, it's twenty-three, ninety-one on page three.
So you can see that they're just different bill dates on those. So we had, we got a, we got a billing through three, we got a billing that encompassed for three with March eighth. And then we got a billing afterwards from them for March twenty-second.
My question being, are those for replenish Big Bear or something else?
Those, those are for the.
So some of it is for the headwork by great system.
Okay.
And some of it's for replenishment. I could get you those numbers. I don't know the numbers right off the, off my head. But when we get two invoices from them, it's gonna lump them together with that one check.
Then my question, I guess, would become in future, are we going to segregate costs because you're bringing on a person who's gonna handle the finances for that? Are we going to segregate replenish Big Bear costs from day to day possibly?
Um, yeah.
They, they are, they're just not segregated here. But if you're like, if you're looking at replenish Big Bear, the cost of that, that's just, that includes Segovia, I see replenish Big Bear. And the other projects are included in that. But it's not, it's not separated in the check register.
Then in the future.
So this is, this reflects the expenditures for WSC?
So far.
Right, as of that date.
Are we going to then run monthly different accounting?
For WSC?
For replenish Big Bear versus operation of the sewer plant.
Yeah, and that's what this does.
Or do you consider them to be one of the same?
Well, this, I mean, we wanted to break it out for the board, specifically the expenditures, because that was what, everybody wanted us to know what the expenditures, how much we were expended to date. So that's why we made this table. So it is the, it, you know, of course, these numbers are reflected in the total expenditures. They're also reflected in here as well. So the, the checks are in there. This tells you what it was expended on just replenish Big Bear, but not on the, the total plant. We don't typically provide a we don't typically provide a, a toll, a total budget number for what we're running the plant and, you know, percent. We do that on a quarterly basis is, is when we do that. Tells you what we're, how we are as far as our budget is concerned.
Okay.
Does that, does that make sense?
Just, just to refine this, proceed. Well, we have a fund that Larry's referring to as a check register.
It's just a check register.
We don't have a separate check, checking account for replenish.
We do not.
Yeah, we have one account.
Yes.
We have one account and everything runs through that one account and then is reported to us so we can see what checks are going.
Just a check register, but they, they do have their own general ledger accounts. So it is separated, but the check register is not gonna show that. Not gonna show it separated out.
Well, what I'm hearing then is that quarterly, then we will get an accounting of plant versus replenish.
When we, we bring your, the quarterly reports to you that show all of our expenditures and you talk about capital, I can separate out a section that must go replenish separate.
I mean, you're getting this on a month, you're getting this on a monthly basis, which tells you the expenditures. But if you want it to be, be reflected in the quarterly report, we can do that as well.
Well, this is the first time we've got it that way. Is that how you plan to do it? Henceforth?
Yes. I, I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of all the expenditures that were being expended on.
Public asking me how it's being counted and I said, I can't tell you. But now we see this, that's why I sent it to this.
You can send it right to here and this tells you exactly how the money's being spent. I mean, this is. I mean, this is, you know, um, you know, a higher view of it, you know, like when it says final design, it doesn't give you all the details, but.
You're gonna do this now as a going forth, everyone will get.
This will be.
Replenish as an accounting.
Yep.
Source of expense or something very even dollar.
The, all the expenditures. Yes.
Okay.
Larry's like to, uh, move the item seven B.
Move it down seven.
We, no, that died. Didn't get a second. We'll have to do that next meeting.
Over to crew seventy.
I'll second it.
Director Russo. Director Savovia.
Hi.
Director Walsh.
Hi.
And vice chair, Harry.
Hi.
All right. We voted on the down off.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. You have my check. I'm still yelling. Okay.
You're still yelling.
Okay, uh, old business. This is a replenish Big Bear discussion number nine A.
Okay, so the first thing is we have a presentation for the voting options. We're bringing back additional information.
Actually, first thing for final design.
He wanted to do the presentation first.
Okay, and, and if, before we start that, if you have any comments you'd like to make on this particular item, you bring your cards forward at this time. Have you tripped with helping us?
You wanna do this one too? Okay.
Chris, thank you.
Okay. The county register voters confirmed that JPAs are not legally authorized to place advisory measures on the ballot, so the advisory vote is no longer an option. We did want to bring some voter information back to the board. This is from the county as of April fourteenth. This table is a one-to-one ratio, assuming that there's one registered voter per equivalent dwelling unit or residential parcel. So for CSD, that's about seventy-three percent of the parcels are registered voters. And the city of Big Bear Lake, that's about thirty-four percent, and that's the best case scenario. Approximately seventy-seven percent of our full-time population over eighteen is registered to vote. And another thing to note is that only registered voters with taxed properties are eligible to vote for a community facilities district or a Melrose tax. So in this table, if you have multiple voters per parcel, that fifty-five percent average decreases. And if you are a registered voter that has a taxed property, that also decreases that fifty-five percent. So really, it's less than fifty percent that would be deciding on this measure. Due to the complexity of a community facilities district, there's just not enough time for us to prepare all the documents for the November ballot. It is too early to estimate that cost because the cost is dependent upon the number of items on the ballot. To start this process, we would need direction to move forward from the governing board with a four-fifths vote. Next, we would prepare the request for proposals for the tax consultant to develop the rate and method of apportionment. We'd bring those proposals back to the board for selection. We estimate about thirty to sixty days for the tax consultant to prepare those documents and information. We would need two governing board members to request or sponsor the formation of the CFD. Within ninety days of that request, the board must adopt a resolution of intention that describes the name of the CFD, the boundaries, facilities and services to be financed. The special taxes, it sets the public hearing and describes the voting procedure. At least thirty days, but no more than sixty days after that resolution is adopted, the majority protest hearing is held. That notice is published seven days prior to the hearing and it's only mailed to the registered voters with taxed properties, at least fifteen days prior to the hearing. If more than fifty percent of those registered voters lodge oral or written protests, the process must stop. If there is no majority protest, the board may adopt the resolution of formation, which finalizes the proceedings. And it places the measure on the ballot and we also need a four-fifths vote for that. We must have the information to the registered voters about ninety days prior to the election and we need a two-thirds voter approval to pass. This measure would be binding on BARWA. The language on the ballot would be approved by your board, by the board. And our O and M costs would continue to go through our existing fee authority or that member agency Prop two eighteen protest hearing process. It does take about nine to fifteen months to fully develop. We will need that four-fifths vote twice to get this measure on the ballot. The results will be after replenished funds are expended. It does have a negative public perception with the ability to foreclose on a property. There is a low success rate for a CFD. And only qualified registered voters with taxed properties can vote, meaning property owners who are not registered to vote here do not get to vote and renters also do not get to vote. If it is a yes vote, this would bind BARWA to proceed and pass on those rates, but it doesn't bind our member agencies. And they can still choose to not approve any replenished items. There will be a loss of legislative support and we really need that support for future grant awards. A future board may be able to reverse this decision with another ballot measure to repeal. The third option that we've been talking about for the last couple of months is the public opinion poll. We would also need direction to move forward from the governing board and we would go through the same request for proposals process. Next, we'd have a workshop, a workshop to develop questions and that exact timeline would be discussed with a chosen poll consultant. These results would be sooner than a ballot measure. We did talk to a polling consultant and gave them some parameters so we can get an idea of the cost. So assuming a five-minute interview in English only with five questions. A dual mode survey, which is online and by telephone that has emails, texts, and phone calls. Two hundred participants would run us about fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. If we added in branded postcards, a sample of two hundred and fifty participants would run about seventeen thousand five hundred. These results can be sooner than any ballot measure. The BARWA board would approve all of the questions. It would be a random selection. And questions have more flexibility than just yes or no, like the CFD, and it can ask multiple questions and you can also rank priorities if you choose. The response rates may be low. There's an expectation of about a hundred responses at best for a phone-only option. About two hundred for the dual mode, and if you add in postcards, that could increase the response rate to about two hundred and fifty participants. It's not binding on anybody and member agencies can still choose to not approve replenished items. A BARWA, a future BARWA board may reverse any decisions based upon this particular result. There are a few considerations, uh, or discussion items that we wanted to consider. The first is BARWA can still, uh, still can't proceed without that WIFTI alone with the operating and JPA amendments. Uh, regardless of what the voting option is, so if one of our member agencies decides to not sign those amendments, we still cannot get that WIFTI alone to proceed. And then also, how would this work if the result is a yes, but one member agency does not want to proceed or participate any longer? And then the next question is, what would be the plan if the replenished funds are expended before any of our results are received? And Jim here with BBNK is open to any questions that you might have about this particular process.
Okay.
First you say vote.
Yes, sorry.
The only one that doesn't have this in his board diagram.
Uh, nobody does it. This was actually just something that, that was put together by, uh, Bridget and the attorneys today.
Well, it'd be helpful if you did that.
Sure, we'd be happy to provide it to you.
Want to take a quick recess? Can you produce it quickly?
We, we can print, we can print copies, yes.
Okay, just take a five-minute recess. Prince of that.
No, it's not, I, we, we didn't, we only made a, a presentation of it.
Was. If the board gets it, isn't supposed to also be available to the public?
It would be then. So we made copies of, of all of it. Everybody, everybody good with that?
We're in recess right now.
Okay.
You're on, I think it's all, it's a research. Oh, that's good. See, I'm gonna say just to take advantage of this. Now, why? Yes, you, you, oh, we know, the, the, as you can, we don't know how, like, first, first. Yes.
Yeah.
And that's it.
That is one too, yeah.
No, but she just, she obviously has the.
Square.
But never fail, Jay.
Yeah.
We can't discuss this until we're in recess, right?
Correct.
The show that was for the, the one who's now. Joe Kelly got worried that.
Did they tell you?
Yeah.
He asked me. That wasn't something we know address. What was the problem about that?
Maybe it was the test to see if I.
Once we get these, this is a favor, are we supposed to proceed, make some decisions tonight?
Let's give it a, none of those kind of rule. I think it's just a summation of what she presented. Sometimes you did, we'll call it considered average. Last one you.
You just started on. Yes, I'm just gonna try on. See, my, my, your shows to be settled in, I mean. Yeah, but you didn't.
Great, but we all saw.
Well, we're, 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 we could have just raised your hands and yes, who else? Next. The next one, the board is. Is it lying? I'm, I'm, I'm a happy boy then. It's good.
Thank you, David.
You bet. We're getting, we're getting the rest for the public, okay?
Did he? No, so this is, I like a residential, residential, like say.
Yeah.
No. So we got that very much.
That's the problem.
It's also business, business, how many huge residential. Okay, it's a company that's in Germany, huge city house. And it's how many. But this is not a, just be very good. Well, I'm sure, sure that is, is.
Different than a voting.
Well, you can ask, this is only residential. Only business, commercial. That's not that huge.
It's all.
Yeah, it does, well, the, the, you need to, unless it's a county that was. If this was, if the. Would only, well, only the. Would only go to the voters, right? Right, until they only kind of add it, it's very hard. Done well. Yeah. 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 But that, that makes it something. Six years, I don't think it always been times. Yeah. And getting a commission, maybe that's the destroy their. Well, even though it's seventy-five, it's fine. So if you have a side key. If I'm. If I hold it safe. I would. The one. That you have. And rest. I mean, which was. I was trying to say something. But how can we? There are six people in that. So we need. Does this people follow that? That. You want. We've been. They're here. There's a whole. We created a. That's. I'm going to let you. Did he have to help? I was out there. And so. No, I'm. Maybe all. Something. Since it was. I, I, I used to be on. That was so many of them. I was just. I was. Tell me. All the things. Oh, there's just something. Yeah. And. But. I, I found finally where the whole lesson was mine. And. She gets back to. Well, just a prayer. How did it? Seventy one. Yes. Thirty five. It's time to be timed. And what you did.
Oh, no.
I mean, I see. My life. You mentioned someone. Just got told. This is.
Do you want me to test them?
Okay. Maybe she. Not on this.
Um, they're getting the copies.
Oh. More copies.
Yeah, because they need to make copies for their.
Okay.
I think that's what they're doing. Yeah.
You guys. Not like your. I don't. Terrible. Yes. Bad. All sudden. I don't. I don't like the. Share. Fracture. Yeah. Actually, the guy that's. With all of our. They.
Oh, this is.
We're. Yeah, so. It's coming out. Maybe they had not a possibility. Each. They'll ensure that issue was said the first time. Um, especially. That's where we don't. Work.
Uh, okay. Fair.
Yeah. It's just. It's something. It's like. Oh, seven. That.
If you want to. You're still making copies.
Yeah.
When you want to. I'm sure.
Might sort of like. Just put this.
Yeah, she just said. Ask me a text.
Okay. Issue. In recent. All. Actions. It actually. But I'm. I'm sorry. That's not many. For this. I'm sorry. I'm including. And I don't. Just think I'll be. That's it. But you're my. Very. But it's. But you're. I don't. The. So. You're. I got it. I didn't understand. I remember. Correct. Eric, I got her. Eric. Sorry. Well, see. So.
I'm sorry.
Side. Simple.
Well, he's.
But I'm. It's. So. Right.
I didn't. I didn't. It about. You're. That's. I'm like. Um.
So.
But I wanted to.
And cheers. Of course, the basis. They were. Yeah. I feel this is. I feel like. I feel like. Don't fit a chair.
I think.
I have. Or you. Even like. The. Apparently, I should. So. That's. I don't.
Yeah.
But. But I.
I didn't know. I hadn't.
That's. That. That memo. That we had. About. If you're. You. Except. And looks. Like. Speaking.
I don't. Yeah.
So. So I wonder. Did I say my. I was. Just to handle all the bills. When you do that project. So I thought.
That's what they had on there. They had on.
Not so sure. That's.
Yeah. No, no.
I think it won the. Four. So they're all, they're all. Much. I was. Tell them.
Okay.
Yeah. Not. It's pretty. That's what. Yeah.
Yeah.
We heard. It's logic. The ones that I. A lot of different. All the. It was. I mean, that's. That's. A lot of stuff. That's. Oh, yeah. We have a lot. That. Most.
Yeah.
That's what she's. Better. That's not. That's.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back order. Okay, so. Thank you. So. I. Any questions from the board members regarding issues? Okay.
Um. Thank you, Bridget, but it's going to take time to digest.
Want to go to public comment?
Uh, why don't we go to public comment now? And then we can bring it back to us. Okay, so public comment on this item?
Matt?
Thank you, Matt Traven. Red. This is sort of bigger late. Just about the voting. We have elected. We've elected you to be able to really dive into these complicated issues. This is a generational infrastructure that is complicated. And we're asking you to dive in and make that decision. It's something that Big Bear Valley needs or here to help. I, I really hope at the top, go to vote committees, workshops. Absolutely. Let's get some, some public input or they can actually be educated and not just from a ten second sound. That's my thing on the, on the voting. There still is a lot of confusion, though, on, on who's paying and why. And, and that has to be addressed. Is the NWD? It is. Was that that? Was that from an NWD this? Um, in the gridway? There was a.
It looks so, yeah.
Supposedly. And it was from NWD saying that there's no value to this project when it seems like that's, that is who is benefiting. In two thousand and eighteen, the lake was unusually for recreation. We couldn't waterski on it. We couldn't paddleboard on it. All the lake owners have their back, their docks. They're up on the, on the, on the, on the dirt. And so to say that there's no value in this, if in two thousand and eighteen, we could have had four feet higher water. That's, there's some major confusion here. And so that, that needs to be addressed. So. And then, of course, looking at the future. Mr. Walsh mentioned about what Michael Beveridge said and the last, last meeting Steve Pholtz said about our potential future. Are we going to have to be spending this money anyway? Because we're no longer going to be able to spend, send this down to Lucerne. And so are we going to be looking at that and then lose out on this? Lose, lose out on this opportunity now and be stuck with all these expenses in the future? So, I mean, it's, I don't believe that that has been really addressed is. In Sacramento, I can't believe we're allowed to send that down now. Kind of overregulation. So, anyway, thank you.
Joy?
I, um, so I couldn't say that. As property owner. I, I'm getting tired. I might.
Missing a page.
But. Here's the matter is, I already paid over six hundred dollars more by considering mortgage in my taxes. Six hundred dollars. I think less than thirteen in social security. So by raising my, raising my taxes, I might have to cut off my electricity. Not pay my water bill anymore because I won't have the money anymore. Because I'm not moving. And you're trying to tell me to put lean on my house for this. Okay? And also, the city of Big Bear Lake, CSD area, has a different interest than the people in Big Bear Lake. And there's no way this should be considered a one vote because Big Bear City or the CSD area needs to vote for our area alone. And Big Bear Lake. So every area needs to be able to agree to it. And I like this idea that it has to be a two vote because you're trying to raise our taxes quite a bit of money. So. I'm still enough. And thank you. Thank you for listening to me.
Um, I don't believe we have any more cards on this. No, I think that's. Okay, let's bring it back to discussion. Uh, I, I think there are a couple items for us to mull over. The Mellow Roos tax method. Uh, polling method. I think those are the two things suggested. Any suggestions? I'll jump in. The, the Mellow Roos is confusing, to say the least. It's not fair how it's done. Um, and so that was one of the reasons we previously did not go the Mellow Roos vote method. Because, and correct me if I'm wrong. Um, not everybody gets to vote on it. Uh, the property owner gets to vote on it. And if you're not registered here, you own property, you don't get to vote on it either. So it's an odd, very odd duck that is easily. Demonized for good reasons. I mean, I can't support a Mellow Roos. And we've had them, we've had those taxes come before us previously. They're just, they're unfair method of, of taxation. So I'll, I'll leave it with that. Those are my opinions regarding it. And hopefully, I'm a hundred percent correct because I went through this twice.
Let's just clarify a little bit. So the way that works is it's the, if you're a registered voter and you own property, you could vote on this. But if you're.
Only one, one person in the household.
No, you, uh, every registered voter in the household, right? Yeah, go ahead. Let the attorney.
If there is a property that's going to be taxed with the community facilities. And say there are two registered voters. Those two registered voters. If the single person living there and there's only one registered voter. There's three registered voters on that property, naked. However, it's a registered voter election only for properties that are taxed. So again, if you live outside the jurisdiction, you're registered to vote, say, in Long Beach, you're not going to vote on the CFD. On the other hand, if your property is going to be outside the district, even though if you're a registered voter in your services district or the county or the city, you would not give a vote. It's got to be those two things. Registered voter residing at a property that is taxed.
And a renter who's registered could not vote.
No, a renter may possibly be able to vote if they reside there because that property is going to be taxed. It doesn't necessarily have to be the owner. It could be a renter as long as they are residing there, registered to vote within the boundaries of that proposed new facilities district.
Okay.
Correct. But the owner and the renters all get to vote.
If the, well, the question becomes, does the owner reside there? And is the owner registered to vote in the, in that area? If it's an absentee owner. For the tenant or. Tenant is. The tenant's the, the vote. Not the owner. The owner lives in Long Beach and just rents it out and isn't here. They're registered to vote in Long Beach. They vote Long Beach stuff. They do not know they're here. So it is, as Vice Chair Herrick said, it's an unusual statute. There's a lot of angles to it. I know this bird could have gone through all the details pretty quickly and pretty time consuming, pretty detailed. Um, and I will mention to the board that, um, they don't have a very high success rate. Uh, we had measure I in the fire authority that this one was one. You need two thirds of voter approval. It went down to sixty. So just on your backs.
Uh, Jim, could you touch on? Like, based on the information that we have? We have a number of voter, registered voters in our. It, in the valley. And then we have a number of residential. Uh.
Parcels.
Parcels. So. Basically, it represents about fifty. You know, we're, we're estimating about fifty percent. It's showing here about fifty-five. But again, we don't know how many registered voters per household we have. So this would only, basically, this only covers about half of the properties up here. So you, so that means, you know, I think. Director Segovia, I think that was one of your, one of the things that you were looking to is, is trying to get. You know, everybody that was going to be basically, uh, have their, this fee imposed on them has an opportunity to, to weigh in on it. So. I think what I was trying to point out is only about, in this kind of a method, only about half could do that. And that's, that was the biggest concern that, that, you know, shot out to me in, in the past and, and the present was that only about half of the actual properties could actually vote on this measure. And, and, and the other half were just going to get taxed without having an opportunity to, to vote on it. That was the biggest issue that I saw in this specific with the, um, community facilities district and.
Hey, if I could, yeah, I could.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm sorry, just to, uh. Elaborate on Mr. Lawrence. Uh, being a resort community up here. You know, I, I worked a lot with the city of Big Bear Lake, uh, Mr. Herrick, this. Done in. If you have a permanent renter, it's a registered voter. You know, they, they would be voting. On the other hand, there's a number of properties up here where you have an absentee owner and there is no permanent renter. It was a short term rental or something like that. There'd be no vote. But the property would still be taxed. You know, we require two thirds of the registered voters in that proposed district to say yes. So again, it's, it's, as Mr. Herrick said, it's an odd duck. It's, it's, it's an odd form of taxation. You know? That's why they don't have a very good. You know this.
Do you, do you think it's because people don't understand or just that tip? You said like measure I didn't, didn't work. Or is it because people will not vote to tax themselves?
Oh, I've seen people tax themselves all over. I think it's that. I think a combination is sort of a, you know, an odd duck of a special tax situation. Uh, I've seen special sales taxes in the cities, counties pass all over. Um, I think the other thing, though, is that as a special tax, it requires a two third vote. That can be a pretty heavy one. Um. And another thing is it is a poor problem. So, you know, unlike sales taxes, unlike hotel taxes, where other people were being taxed, maybe some residents or property owners are being taxed if they're buying things in town by sales tax. It's all when the property owners are being taxed with CFD. But you. The CFD tax is basically an adjunct that goes on your property tax bill. If you look at the line item on the property tax bill, you know, there's the core tax of one percent, the state minimum. And then there's that control assessments, then, then the CFD would be another line item on.
You know, I think that's one of the reasons why the previous board had chosen the, the Prop two eighteen because that is every property owner gets to vote it to make their voice heard through that process. And so that, that's why I think the, the previous board and Mr. Herrick, you probably, you, you can tell what your, the reason for your decision on that. But I think that's why they had, you know, previously chosen that method was because every property owner has a voice at that point with the Prop two eighteen.
It's just right now, none of the property owners have a voice. Right?
Well, I, there.
Saying it's only capturing half the people. But right now, the way we're.
Well, there's a two, there's a two eighteen happened. There's a two eighteen that happened with C, uh, um, CSD. And the city is going to go through a, a two eighteen process as well. And so every single property owner will have an opportunity to, to voice.
It's like really impossible to meet the two eighteen threshold.
Oh. Just like the, you know, C, CFD, right? It's, it's, you know, that threshold is pretty hard to meet too, right? So, you know, we understand that. It's just, it, it's the only way, I think it's the only way that every single property owner has a voice, though. This, they would not even have, uh, every single property wouldn't even have a voice to do it, right? They, they don't have the ability to do that. Only half of them do. And I'm not sure if that was the, you know, if that's the intent of the board to, 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 you know, to do that. Or, you know, I mean, I, I don't know. That was, and I don't think, I think that's why they made the decision in the past was, was because they felt like at least everybody would have a voice. You may not make the, the, you know, you may not get the majority that you need to protest it. But at least they had a voice to, this, to say, you know, something about it. I, I don't know if that helps at all, but, you know, I, I, you know, I just wanted you to know that that's kind of, I think that, that was the mindset in the past. Yes, please. Yes, sir. For us, Mr. Looney is too young. Remember writing on the back of the truck, an NWD truck, that's stapling signs up on each telephone pole throughout the district for the initial assessment. And as I recall, the assessments for the NWD were not blanket. The closer to the lake you were, the more you paid because your benefit was greater. Whereas with CSD or what, any of those. And this replenish Big Bear, it's a one size fits all. Isn't it?
Well, I think I can speak to that. Under Prop two eighteen, you already have three classes of, you know, taxes, you know, assessments, you have fees. We were talking about fees a minute ago during protest process with fees. We were talking about special tax. Special taxes require an actual election.[1470.24] We were talking about special tax, special taxes require an actual election, goes to polls, a two thirty voter approval. And as long as the voters approve it, it's whatever the tax is set at in the balance. Assessments are subject to a different standard, which is it has to be proportional to the special benefit that property receives. And so, you know, how to come up with that proportionality? That's why we hire tax consultants, they come up with assessment engineer reports that, you know, come up with this calculus. But that would be one way to do it is proximity to the benefits. So, uh, you know, I've seen this before with things like a. Uh, highway or street painting assessments. Where if it's gonna reduce the noise, they actually do a noise study. People who are closer pay more, people who are further away pay less. Now again, I don't know the entire way that the MWD assessment is structured all these years ago. But that sounds to me like the way the construction assessment is calculated, the benefit that each property gets and. It could be proximity to the lake or proximity to the benefit. That would be the basis for that. Again, that's an assessment. That's different than a tax. So again, they're they're kind of different animals with Prop two eighteen.
And what is it we do? Borrow, tax or assessment?
The fee, we're fee.
Fee per service.
Well, and fees are not based on special benefits property. Fees are limited to the actual cost of providing the service. So of providing the sewer water renovation service, things like that.
So if I own five homes. And I am a registered voter in one of those, do I get five votes or one vote?
Uh, for fee protests under Prop two eighteen, it's based on the number of parcels that protest. So if you own five parcels, you could submit five protests. Uh, I believe what Sigovia was talking about earlier, however it is. Say you send out, you know, ten thousand notices to all the property owners who could potentially protest. It's very rare that you're gonna get five thousand and one protests back. Thereby resulting in a majority protest thereby shutting down the fee. And so Prop two eighteen fees oftentimes have an easier time passing. Than an assessment or a tax.
Um, Jim, can you just? I know you mentioned the assessment part. At one point in time, we had a discussion about the issue because it's not. This, the benefit of the lake is not only to those parcels. There's a a benefit. At one point in time, we were told you can't do a special assessment because. It's it's not the assess, the um benefit is not to. Like, just limited to the parcels around the lake. Everybody, because it's a public lake, everybody gets the benefit of a fuller lake. And that's. I mean, at least that's what we were told at the time is that 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 was not. Uh, not an suitable mechanism because you, it would, it would be very difficult to to provide a. A single benefit for for the property owners, if that makes sense.
Well, coming up with a special benefit analysis, uh, you know. Establishing this uh special benefit assessment, that is engineered report. That analyzes and qualifies special benefit, that's where all the magic happens. That's that's the core basis by which you justify the assessment. I can't speak to modern day, based on your calculations, your probably, how that would be calculated, I'm just saying that what they did, what MWD did ten years ago.
Maybe it's.
That doesn't sound like it was inherently an unusable way for them to do it back in the day. Again, before I sign off on any sort of special assessment today. We'd have to have that engineer, that assessment engineers we call, which is really a tax consultant. Or a financial consultant. Sit down and really crunch and go, all right, do we need the legal standards? It, have we done it proportionally? Are we capturing all the properties and are we receiving benefit and all that? So I'm sort of talking in theoreticals right now, and anything was going to become actual, you know, we'd have to sit down and really crunch.
At our March nineteenth meeting, uh, we worked with Ward and Luthy on that special benefit assessment and whether it was feasible or not. And the discussion was that um. The benefit um only applies to cer- cannot only apply to certain parcels and not to others and proximity to the lake. Or enhancement of property value doesn't apply unless it's tied to a wastewater benefit, which we don't provide those levels, so. Is is that the, is that the main difference is because we only have one type of treatment, so we can't do the special benefit assessment?
You know what? I'm gonna answer by saying that sex was really good. I've been working with him for years, he knows special benefit assessment probably better than I do.
Yeah, tha- and that was his opinion at the time, I didn't wanna just call it out, but that's what his. His opinion was that you could not do it.
So we're just having this very interesting theoretical discussion, but he's already looked at this detail and said.
No.
Not feasible.
He does this.
But that's not.
But I'll just give you my recollection and. It was a long time ago, the assessment for MWD, I believe, was based upon a bond. It's a little bit different, wasn't an assessment, it was a some sort of a bond, it had to do with the rebuilding of the dam, reinforcing the dam. And hopefully somebody here who remembers specifically.
You know, this was the purchase.
It was the purchase of the bottom of the lake.
Then it was, well.
Not the dam.
I I'm just, I'm, uh, I don't have, I don't.
Yeah.
I I'm way too young to know all these.
The can of running this discussion, it's possible that MWD did this so long ago, it's probably Prop two eighteen, I'm just like.
Oh, absolutely.
Sure, so it's back in the seventies and eighties, you know. May maybe they came to a different calculus.
So to speak to the present time, what's the section they're trying to pass which will make. Uh, everything has to be a two thirds vote, everything would have to be a vote of the public, and it would be retroactive, what's the number coming up in November?
Are you talking about the taxpayer protection act?
Yes.
That's a completely different thing, that's the statewide issuing that's currently slated to be on the ballot. The taxpayer protection and government accountability act, that's currently slated to be on the November that's statewide now.
But would that affect what we're doing right now?
We're fee per service.
I do not believe it would affect a community facilities district special tax. Uh, yeah, it it does apply to certain fees, I'm not going to apply as to what. Fees you guys are dealing with, while I know what's my work going to do on that. Um, as for special benefit assessment, I don't believe the TPA even gets a special benefit assessment, as long as you follow existing. Prop two eighteen and assessment act rules. That's fine, but again, Mister Karu could already advise that the special benefit assessment is not easy. So I think that that's a no at this point, again, I I trust his opinion, so.
And the Supreme Court on April twelfth made a decision to kick it back to the California court. Of exorbitant assessments, where the man wanted to, uh. He questioned why it was being assessed twenty-three thousand dollars on his little lot, the building's little house, always little. And they kick it back, say. That has to be. A portion. Was that totally disassociated from what we're doing?
Well, again, you're talking about a special benefit assessment. Sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say that that Casey's talking about it deals with the mitigation fee act, so that's a whole.
Oh, that's a separate thing.
That's a whole different.
Okay.
You're you're talking about silent.
We're not gonna get caught in that.
We're talking about a completely different thing, mitigation fee act is not Prop two eighteen.
But when we did the two eighteen, city did it for five years. CSD did it for one year. So right off the bat, you're not. Doing exactly the same thing. And then the two eighteen didn't ask them, are you willing to spend sixty-five million dollars for this project? It simply said. Is it okay if we jack it up twenty-two and a half percent first year, eighteen percent the year after that, and each subsequent for the next third year? For a hundred and thirty-seven point something.
I'm sorry, which which was this?
Well, we did the two eighteen for the increase to borrow fees.
Okay.
The city had a, had a website and I think that they did a postcard or something and they had a fast page. Yeah, explained all of that, yes.
We did one.
Correct.
And the idea was, is it okay to increase these fees? We didn't ask, do you realize what you're committing to here? Sixty-five million dollars. They just said, is it okay with you if we double your borrow fees in the next five years?
Well, that's the bottom one.
Uh, there's a lot more to that as I see it. So that's what I'm saying.
I don't, I don't, I can't speak to past fees that were enacted, if if you want our office to look in with this or something, we can do that. If you're talking about past fee, I'm not going to give your opinion, I'll.
Yeah, that that, it's the, it's it's the last two, so for two year, we put, we put together a five year rate structure.
Which is purpose.
We sent it to CSD. They chose to adopt a one year rate structure on that as.
Which is purpose.
Right? They have now adopted the second year of it, I think, right? That's.
By virtue of a budget, it's going to be, well, probably will be a blue.
Okay, so they adopted now the second year of that, I think what Mister Walsh is alluding to is. There there was a limited explanation on his prop, on the Prop two eighteen, by the way, not by Barwa, that was done by CSD. Right? A limited explanation in that of what they were paying for. Uh, uh, is that, is, I'm getting that as what you're.
Yeah, there's a fee for next year.
Okay, and so again. The city's process for the Prop two eighteen, I know was different, I I got one. I know had a full explanation of the replenished Big Bear project, it was a, there was a card that went involved, it was a detailed. What we were taught, what were they, it was describing in that, and that's what I received, I live in the city. Um, so, you know, that would, that would be something definitely that CSD could consider. You'd have to talk to your general manager about that, to put out a a more detailed Prop two eighteen.
Uh, description. Yeah, is that two eighteen, which is. Being used to justify how this came about. Ask, did you, do you wanna pay this twenty-two and a half or eighteen percent increase? Not, are you, do you understand the cost of this project? And that it's gonna go on, uh, the loan is thirty years or forty?
Thirty years.
Thirty years. And by that time, you're gonna have to be refurbishing the plant during those thirty years. According to Mister Schuman, you can figure that we're gonna have to redo. The residues for the reverse osmosis every five years, you're gonna have to earn people, yada, yada, yada.
Yeah, we, it it's.
More to it than simply saying, are you okay with paying eighteen percent more this year?
Well, a- and there is a, in the, in the budget for the project, there is. A replacement program already accounted for in the per, in the project, like you're describing. Just like there is one for Barwa. As a whole, it it as it stands today, we have a replacement program in there, a twenty year CIP, that's included in our our rate structures now. Um, so yeah, you're just, you're describing it right, but the, but what happened to the residents? The description of what happened to the residents or didn't happen to the residents is really something between. For CSD to take up and there, and that's really on CSD to describe to them. The, like I said, the city chose to describe it differently.
I see that what was done was not full disclosure.
By CSD?
Or the city Big Bear Lake.
I I think ours was pretty, pretty.
The city, the city's is pretty.
We've already told the fire chief that his little cards that he sends out, people throw them away. Yeah, so even though he may have done a better job in the city on our card. You know, we've already told him not to do a card this year. So, and I can tell you, for my father's property in the city, he didn't get one at all. So there are holes in this.
Right. Well, I may not.
Okay, we're we're kind of. A little off the, off the subject, but CSD, you guys have an opportunity, a larger description coming up. Um, so it gets back to what's on the table is mellow rose, I don't think we wanna go that direction, I don't think it makes sense. And the second thing you were talking about was doing a poll. So we can, we can beat each other's systems up, how you did the two eighteen, but that's clearly not what I'm prepared to come on.
I mean, I'm finding the poll that this is just in, so. I guess we have a poll.
Okay, well then, uh. We need to bring it back to our respective boards for up and down vote, that's a possibility of that.
And here is the plus, we're talking about the fourteen thousand or seventeen thousand, or how many bodies in the litter, I mean, I was. So at the moment, we are not doing anything?
Well, we could, we could, yeah, we're gonna bring it back when Jim, when Jim is here too, so you get a full vote of everybody.
Well, we don't even need this politick bar, like, it sounds like nothing does.
I mean, yeah, I mean. That, you know, again, whatever the board decides they wanna do on the the polling, we'd be happy to to facilitate the polling if you.
Well, if we can bring that part of them.
Yeah.
When when Jim is here at the next meeting, allow him to chime in.
Yeah.
On that particular subject.
And then, and you know, probably, we'll, we'll have to, you know, look for a budget appropriation, all that kind of stuff, because that's not in our current budget structure. For for the the polling, if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, well, again, in in doing so, um, bringing it back, I think that's. Again, just my opinion is that it should be by agency, the polling.
Okay, oh, I I got it, I should say. So it'd be each respective agency as opposed to Barwa doing it?
Yeah, yeah, uh, either that or because it's the water issue, it's the DWP's customers poll. I'll make sure everyone gets polled, I think it's the important thing, anyways, so we'll bring that back.
Okay.
Jim's back.
All right. Perfect.
Um. Any other discussions in the board before we move on? Okay. Item ten A, face schedule.
We're not dealing with the other one.
What were the other thoughts?
There's a couple of other items on the.
Program Water Equity Act program.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right, would you like to? Question number?
Uh. Well, I haven't had time to go through all of the. Wiring impact for the new standards yet. But in our program, water equity.
Uh huh.
Uh, I thought we were discussing the idea of reevaluating. EDUs versus flow and are the number of EDUs accurate and appropriate? And we've got in here, I see this Reader's Digest chart, it says CSD hundred sixty-eight, or P DWP two twenty and one twenty. For a total of a hundred and fifty. The new handout says the DWP would be getting five hundred plus another hundred and twenty for the bike park. So it went from three eighty-five to five hundred, now it's six hundred and twenty. Uh, I would still like to see some discussion of. How this is computed. Year to year, uh, and I was asked. If I'm comfortable with how it's being done, I said no, and he said, but this is how it's been done for years. Okay, every year, the CSD reevaluates the water sewer trash fees. So I would think that this, the Barwa should be reevaluating this more often than every twenty years.
So more often, well, was, uh, can you explain that a little bit more? The, that every twenty years?
But she was asked, when was that set? Uh, they were, we were told nineteen seventy-seven, Bridget set it and then revised in ninety something.
We talked about the, this, the.
Now, we could.
The EDS, okay.
Well, all fees because it's not this just on.
Well, can I, can I make a suggestion? So one of the things that I I've included in the, in the JPA. Um, they thought about how this water would be. Um, divvied up, shall we just say? So there is a pretty detailed discussion in the JPA, which all the agency had has signed and agreed to. Amended. And amended, but this, this part is still accurate and and consistent. Um. It's a pretty detailed discussion on on the the rights of the water, how it's divvied up in. Um, that would be divvied up should one of the agencies choose to. Um, take the reclaimed water. So in this section, there is a section in here that says that the, that the. The collection agency, it would be based on the six months, um, the preceding six months. Um, and. And there's some criteria that the um, that the collection agency would have to meet to to acquire this water. Um, you know, show that there's a reasonable beneficial use for the affluent. That the the benefit meets the requirements of the regulatory agency's jurisdiction and is, um. It will not have an impact on the environment, all those things that are in here. This already details which the the, all of the agencies already approved on how the water is distributed. We can recreate the wheel. Or we can use the wheel that's already in place.
But was this used to create the letter of intent?
The letter of intent had nothing to do with this at all. The letter of intent was. Barwas, uh, from Barwas perspective, if the, if the collecting agencies do not decide to take the water and do something with it. Then it's Barwas right to sell the water. And that's the way that was constructed, the letter of intent.
Except that according to the. Program or project, whichever is being called. The first step is to dump the water in Stanfield Marsh.
That's, that's correct.
Free and charged.
Well, that's, that that, that is not, that is not, the the intent is there is, there is supposed to be some participation for MWD. Um, through this process, right? Uh, we talked about the fact that MWD, there is a a pending. Um, they needed a couple of items to negotiate some sort of agreement with us, and we've, we've delivered on one of those items.
But at the moment, we do not have a final agreement.
One hundred percent, we do not have a final agreement with them, that's one hundred percent true. We only have, we don't have final agreements with DWP or CSD. We have letter of intent with both of them, but we do not have final um agreements with with any, with any of them.
All right, let's get to it, but that's probably the pause with this whole program. In order to work through all these issues.
And that's when trying to work out the equity part. The letter intends at two thirds DWP, one third CSD, at a price of eight sixty-six eighty-two an acre foot. Well, if we're going to put twenty-two hundred, according to the March twenty-eighth brochure. Twenty-two hundred acre feet in the Stanfield Marsh, that makes it worth over one point nine million dollars, but. There's no commitment to buy, sell, trade, whatever. On that money, which these agencies and the taxpayers are being asked. To pay to create this new water, which we're gonna give away free.
Well, I mean, I I think, I think I I'll go back to the the general focus, the general focus of this project was to keep the water on the mountain. Okay, that was the general focus of this, of the, of the, and there are benefits to keeping this water on the mountain. Water sustainability is the biggest benefit. The charge that we have is really just to to treat the water and then to dispose of the water. We, we entered into a um, into a letter of intent with DWP and CSD because we wanted to. Show the lending agencies that we had some other participation from other agencies up here where, that were interested in the water. We also did some, and we don't have anything finalized from from anybody, we have those letters of intent signed, we don't have anything signed by uh, MWD, one was given to them as well. Um, but we don't have anything signed from them as well. But it is not intended that the overall is, those were introduced by Barwa for. Be, because the other agencies have not. Said that they wanted the water. If, you know, if um. We don't sell it and CSD wants all of their portion. Then we go back to this agreement, it says six month, last prior six months. Um, you know, and we could look at the flow rate coming from CSD for the prior six months, and then you can decide if you wanna sell it to. Uh, MWD, or you wanna, you know, inject it into the ground, or you wanna do something else with it. You know, CSD is welcome to 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 do that, but it would be based on, I provided this, so that way we're not recreating the wheel, that's, that was the whole intent. So you could, you could definitely, CSD could send me, send um, Barwa a letter saying it it intends to. Take its fair proportion of the project water. And then, and intends, and then you'd have to detail what you were going to do with it. And then you would be able to um, to. Take that water and and do whatever you detail, and as long as it met the requirements of. The JPA, we would have no issue with that.
Well, jump into a little bit, I mean. Lot of moving parts with this, we don't have all the moving parts, sort of, but again, that's why we paused for a moment, I just wanna. Remind us, you know, it's right on our mission, it's right on the wall, efficiently collect and treat. Beneficially reuse wastewater and biocides, uh, bio solids and environmentally and physically responsible manner. I mean, we do that with our biosol solids, it's one of the byproducts. Our our wastewater, we are reusing it, but not to the most effective manner, we're throwing alfalfa down in the desert. And exporting our not so clean water to a different watershed, which is not. Or, the poor folks live down there, it's not the right thing to do, my opinion. I mean, we should be doing it on our own. I mean, we should be doing it on our own, but I mean, it's right in our mission. And, and that's kind of the level we just, we, we need to continue to think, in my opinion, sort of. Big picture, what's our mission, what we're supposed to be doing? And, and there's a lot of details, and hopefully these engineers sitting here can figure it out. And bring it back to us in the deadline before the whole thing blows up in our face. And then we get our children and grandchildren upset with us because we didn't do it again, so.
I just have a little bit of problem with the fiscally responsible part of it.
I'm not here to debate with you that. But yes, in a fiscally responsible manner, absolutely. Uh, and are we fiscally responsible today? Are we blowing it for our children, we very fiscally unresponsible? It's kind of a big picture thing, and you can have a disagreement with me, whether we should be fiscally responsible today and not spend the money and worry about it. And on the road, worry about it later, but. The mission is right there, and it's pretty easy to say.
It's just this, the thing that I'm struggling with is this project is gonna cost more than building a whole new hospital.
We'll see.
Even if this is a hundred million and that's a hundred million, it's, at least there's a physical building there that everybody can use, so that's, that's my struggle.
I, I understand you, I understand, you've had big projects, but Dan Bridge was a big project, very. Very controversial at the time. Every, every big project has been very controversial, I would bet when this started, when we started this J P A, it was very controversial. I was probably going to, and the same thing, I mean, we were taking, uh, putting our sewage in the ground, it wasn't working out so well. We had to figure out something else.
We go back to the very first page of item six B, where it says, this is a draft program. It involves multiple projects, do we agree on those terms?
The, the program, it, it involves multiple projects, that's correct.
The goal of filtering the water here and moving it as far as division, was that the first. Project.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, that's, yes.
And that project's destiny is to send the nice clean water to the lake.
That's correct.
At which point you no longer own. And in fact, I asked them at the M W D, does that mean we wouldn't have to buy the water back? To send it up to San Canyon, and her response was, yes. So now we've not only spent money to produce the water and given it away, now we must pay for it again. Before we can get it anywhere near an aquifer, which is one of the claimed benefits of this program.
I, I would expect, right, if, if Barwa charges them money to, to receive the water. And you want the water, then you would pay them that money. To do what you wanted with it. If it was stored in their lake to do that, if you wanna capture it before then and do something else with it, you're welcome to, to, to do that process. But I would suspect that that would be, that, that's why they would. That would be why, um, they would, they're trying, trying to charge you is because. But then it becomes their water, right, once we put it in there, and then they would wanna to charge somebody, whatever they paid for, probably. To, to do that.
Well, you talk about. Selling the water.
Right.
Primary goal was to keep the water in the valley.
That's right.
And you've mentioned selling, uh, using it to raise alfalfa, is anybody using that water to grow alfalfa right now?
Last I heard, the guy, um, the grower down there was going to start planting.
At this moment, he is not growing any alfalfa.
Okay.
He found out it was cheaper to go buy it than to.
Well, I, and I told you that, right, so I, I'm well aware of that, and so he found out it was cheaper, but last we spoke with him. Two weeks ago, he was going to start to plant. And, and there's a process that has to happen before he can grow with that, we have to go down and do testing before he can start to grow. So we sent our team down there to do the testing that he needs to grow. So my understanding, you're not, you're not seeing anything wrong right now at this moment. But he has indicated us that he's gonna start to grow, and that's the, and that's, yeah, that's what's happening.
I don't think he's defaulted on his payments, so.
No, but I'm just asking, when we say you wanna sell the water. If you comply with your project and you send it to Stanfield Marsh. You can't sell it anymore, it's not yours, it's gone.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, and now we're kind of splitting hairs.
Well, we're also, we're.
Right, we're splitting hairs because.
With all these different theories and, can we just wait for it to come back to us, take a look at it before we made? Past judgment, but we, we didn't even know what's being really proposed, and I heard what, what Brett needs to have.
Kicking things down the road.
I, I understand, but.
We take a pause, that's exactly what's happening.
I know that's what's happening, that's why I wanna see everything come back to us, we can make a decision, but we can't make a decision, we're just guessing right now what might come back to us. I don't think that that's, my opinion, we, give them some time, let more, that's why we paused on this thing. Let, let it be worked out and come back, and it could be terrible, we'll say, forget it, I don't know. Or it could be what would exactly what we think it could be.
Been pointed out with all the number of meetings and number of motions, this has been going on for eight years. Seems to me that there's been plenty of time to get this straightened out, something that wasn't mentioned in here is. Steve Holtz, first manager of the M W D, probably. As far as I'm the most knowledgeable about what happened when we tipped over the lake and started all those procedures. Came here and in the first meeting said, he's in favor of the project, he was, and I know he was since nineteen seventy-seven. But he says he wasn't aware of how many loose ends there were that had not been tied up. Even he noticed it, and so that's my concern when we talk about, well, let him make these decisions. At what point do we finally say, okay, you have answered my questions? And I cannot justify what you're doing, or you've answered all the questions, you've got all the. Eyes dotted and t's crossed, it's okay, because if. Someone's still here.
He's gone.
If he wants the five people up here to make a decision for. Twenty-two thousand people in this valley, wow. You're trusting us to make that decision?
That's why, Larry, that's why we paused to get the homework done. I'm not objecting to what you're saying, but.
Some point, can you tell me when this is going to be done?
I, I, and, and.
Sort of have a deadline.
Yeah, so I have, I, I told you the two things that they requested from me. The two things they requested of me was a letter of, uh, complete application, which I just received a few days ago. And then the second thing was the pilot study data. That's what M W D needed to make, uh, to make a decision on what they thought it was going to cost them to. To do the, uh, monitoring and the offset program, right? So that's what they, they have decided that they needed to make those decisions on negotiating a agreement. And we've had several conversations about that with them now. I, I don't think, you know, I, I, hopefully they're, they're genuine in their conversations with us. That, that, uh, that we're gonna be negotiating the next few months here to, to get a contract underway with them. Um, but, but there is, like, I, I, I'm not sure what kind of loose ends that, that. I mean, we have been charging hard, me personally, for seven years on this. Um, and, uh, there are times in the process where you're waiting for the regional boards, you're waiting for. M W D, you're waiting for. Fishing game, you're waiting for all these other agencies, and you're, you're just, you know, working several different things all at one time. I mean, you can, you know, we're, we're in midst of a, a design right now, right? You awarded the design back in December, um, to, so we're in the final design phase. Um, and that's gonna get us a, a final design that we can take out to bid, right? So you started that process. We're, we just got the letter of complete application from the regional board, another big step in, in, uh, in this whole process. We've previously, um, negotiated with M W D and C S D and D W P for. You know, letter of intents, um, to move forward, we've had lots of discussions with everybody and, um. You know, I think we've made huge progress on this project since the very beginning. I, I know it's, it, it's, it's hard to un, to understand how, but this, this is a big, huge project underway. Um, and, you know, we keep ticking off these, um. These steps that we need to take to, to move forward, and one of them, the next one is gonna be the E I R, which is, is next month. Uh, for the board to consider, and that's the next, you know, another big step for the board to, to adopt the E I R, that's gonna be. The next, the next steps, and then as.
We certify.
Certify, I'm sorry. Certified, um, the E I R, and then, um. By then, we, we should have the environmental, the, um, pilot data, data backed from. From, uh, W S C for M W D to consider. And we can start our negotiation with them on our contract for that piece, and meanwhile, we have. Department of Drinking Water, we have, uh, Division of Drinking Water, excuse me, Division of Drinking Water. We have the regional board, we have a regional board meeting, uh, coming up. We have, I mean, we, you name it, we have it, I mean, it, it, it occupies. Much, the majority of my time, uh, and a, a whole ti, entire team. Time to, uh, get a project like this going.
We don't have on the agenda a vote, a further down vote on continuing or not continuing. So. Information's still coming in.
Stay tuned for further details. Did I misunderstand, but last month you said six to eight months before you ran out of money and that we lost the Whitby loan?
I, I, I run out of money, it's, um, in September. I have to, I, I'd like to have the Whitby loan in place, um, in place. And the money, so we can draw the money in November, because that's when we run out of money. But remember, we, and, and.
What is Whitby inspired?
Uh, we have, they said to me, um, after a year, we might have to redo some of the environmental documents that we were talking about. And then, um, if we went beyond two years, they would just reprogram our money to somebody else.
A year from when?
A year from when we. We started negotiating our, the, the loan documents, uh, uh, probably about three or four months ago. Um, so I, I would expect. And, and, you know what, and, but the N I P A, the N I P A process. Isn't certified until you certify the E I R. Sorry, it's just so many moving parts, I'm doing my best.
There's probably a chance to pull the plug. Let's just keep, while we get this chance, get any information, answer any questions.
I mean, you're, you're already plugging away.
So you don't want any action tonight, right?
We're not asking for any action, it was just, you know, we were just bringing back the information that the committee. Asked us to, and, and that was, that was all we were doing is bringing back.
What I'm asking to bring back is the poll question.
Okay.
Give us with us.
Okay, we can do that.
So you can see no interest in discussing water equity?
Well, if you have some different ideas than what was originally thought of in the J P A and, and is signed off by all of the member agencies. Um, and you would like to change the J P A to reflect those. We can certainly dis, discuss those and, and, um, we can have Ward draft something up, a, a change to the J P A. To incorporate, um, some different concepts of, um, proportionment of the water, but. I don't see where, um, I, I mean, the J P A is pretty clear on how it's distributed. And how it would be distributed to each of the member agencies if they so choose.
And if it does, then it goes back to the member agencies and we get to chew on it a little bit.
Then you guys would have to chew on it, because you guys would have to tell me what you're going to do with your water, right? So there's.
It also opens up the whole J P A agreement.
Oh, that would, for sure, that would open up the whole J P A agreement, um, but the, uh, the part behind that is, this. But this, um, there's a whole process that the, each of the member agencies, if they decided they wanted their water, they would have to. Um, follow the procedures that's laid out in the, uh, J P A. If they wanted to do it this way, if you wanna do it some other way, happy to discuss it and happy to, to provide a, um, to provide a draft. Um, J P A member amendment based on the direction I get from the board.
If I heard correctly, then you're saying that that's how the letter of intent got created, was by these three pages?
The letter of intent was Barwa's, Barwa selling the water to, uh, other agencies. Not the agency selling the water to, to whoever they want. That makes sense. The five hundred acre feet had nothing to do with that, that had to do with.
So how was that established?
Okay, so it was established because we had the existing snow line that was made up to, that goes up to Bar, to, to Bear Mountain. And it goes up to, to San Canyon. That aquifer can, can handle, based on Tom Harder's estimate, three hundred and eighty acre feet. It's not an exact science, it's a three hundred and eighty acre feet in the spreading round. Then, then, and the golf course, at one point in time, we had a discussion and they were. Um, they were interested in allowing us to, to, um, give them, um, this water instead of pumping it out of the ground. And so, um, that turned into five hundred acre feet that, that way. That's how you got, get the three eighty, that was being spread, and the, the one twenty, that's in the same aquifer. Um, that Reggie would be withdrawing.
Okay, rather than drag this on to the poor people who are out of the dinner. Then I have to say that the handouts over time have changed. And those handouts are what I'm questioning when it comes down to how this, this water is being. Shuffled, sold, given away. And as I've been asking for two years, do we have the agreement to use the pipeline? No, uh, I think at one point you did finally get the agreement that says we can put the water in the lake according to fishing game.
That would be the water master that says that, and, uh, and the Regional Water Policy Control Board. A, and then the, uh, fishing game, that, that, uh, is that, I think that's. I think that's sixteen hundred, no, no, that's all in process, uh, you know, we need the environmental document done, right? That's what they had their opportunity to weigh in, they weighed in, you'll see the comments in the environmental document. That's what we, this is the process that, that a project like this takes, is, 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 is what we're doing right now. So now they've had a, an opportunity to weigh in the environmental, uh, document. They have given us the guidelines in there, what we would need to do to, to, to do that, and we're providing that, and we make a comp, we comment to every single. We respond to every single comment they made in there, and that's how, that's how this is done, so it's not exactly like a letter, um, from them. But we have a letter from them. I don't know how to say that, we have a letter from them on, on the, the project. Putting the project water in the lake, they gave us comments on, on what we would, what they would like to see based on that.
So let me just learn, your, your heartache has to do with, there's a lot of loose ends, I get it. And we, we get some time to tie together loose end. It only gets critical if we get the Whitby along, so we start spending the money, right? Even if we get the Whitby along, let's prove tomorrow, it's only, we only pay it from the draw.
So you currently have a three point four million of those for the pilot program, or?
Yes.
You're only paying.
Interest on.
Interest.
That's correct.
Assume to go into the other one. But my heartache is, I would not hire a contractor to build my home if he can't tell me how much it's going to cost. And how long it's gonna take to get done.
That's what we're working on.
That's where, I'm trying to get you those numbers.
And is it, is it gonna cost this three point eight million dollars, like, if the, to the point where we actually find out how much it's gonna cost?
You're going to get, they're, they're in the process, there are, they get updated cost estimates, right? So we take the pilot study, they do this, uh, basis of design development, they give us a new cost estimate then. And then they give us, and then as we're going through the process of design, we get, we get additional cost estimates during the whole process. At the last minute, when we go to, uh, before we go out to bid, we'll have a final cost estimate from them. To put in the design documents to go out to bid the project, we go out and we bid the project and we actually get real numbers.
Right, so what, so, so we could potentially spend another. So we could potentially spend another. Almost four million dollars. Finding out how much it's going to cost and then we go, oh crap, it's. Way more than we thought it was. Is that, is that?
Well, the board's already committed that money.
What's that?
The board has already approved that contract.
Right, so, so we, right now we're, we spent ten million dollars approximately.
Nine point, nine, nine, well, we've spent four. We're committed to another five point seven. And those are just rough numbers at today.
So we wouldn't be at. At almost fourteen million, we'd still be within that ten million?
That's right. That's right. You've already committed to this pro- to, to this process. And so the board already awarded that contract already. Um, and so we're just, we would just fulfill that contract.
And I would have played it to, you're going to build a house. I mean, first of all, you're going to know where you're going to build it. You gotta get your plans done. You gotta get your engineering done and a contractor is not going to give you a bid based upon, hey, would you build me a house over there? There's a lot that goes into, a lot of expenses are going to require to even getting your bills. And I think we're in that process, right?
Yeah, you need the design plans, right? First to, to bid a project. Right? And that's all that you, you, you've actually asked me twice, Larry, about those design plans. And I'm trying to get those design plans to you so you can bid it and actually get a number. A real number as opposed to all the other. Conjecture that's out there right now. There's a lot of, you know, people saying all kind of hundred million dollar, all these, all these numbers, it's, they're just all over the place. Which, you know, they're not based on any, you know, any credible. Information. That's not based on any credible information. We have an engineer's estimate that we've been working from, we're continuing to work from, our cost estimates are based on that. Our rate structure is based on that. This is how a project is built. Every single time. I've done millions and millions of dollars of projects for the city, millions of dollars for the city. Done the exact same way that we're, the exact same process. There's just additional. Steps in this wastewater treatment part because we're dealing with a lot of different, um. Environmental agency, you know, uh, different environmental agencies.
I, I think part of the problem like within our ad hoc is the thing that we have.
Mm-hmm.
You know, to, to find out, you know, just down to the, to the bigger nets that. Three quarters of the water is going into the lake, one quarter is going into the aquifer. So. I think. You know, the information has been sold out. So people are now finding out. These things.
Well, I mean, I, I, we, it, I don't think that has not changed since the beginning of the project. That information has been out there of the intent, but remember too. That the board has been making decisions all along, um, like we've been bringing this discussion back to them on, hey, this is what the aquifer can take. This is what the, you know, the, um, the hundred and twenty from the golf course, all we can get, gather this. This is the most of cost effective is to repurpose, to reuse their line as opposed to, to spending, uh, you know, millions of dollars to put a different line in. I mean, we're, we were making, you know, making active. You know. Barwa and its board is making active decisions on those things the whole time. So this isn't something new. This is.
There's nobody knew about it.
Well, that, and, and unfortunately, you know, I can't do anything about that. All I can do is put the, the information out there, right? We, we, you've seen the number of. Special, um, workshops, yeah, the meetings, I presented at the city council several ti- several times, I presented at, at CSD's board several times. I presented at Sierra Club, um, the senior center. The high schools and, I mean, I have put that.
I already gave you my feedback on that.
Right.
You already heard my feedback on that.
Uh, on the, the number.
On the information that you were presenting in your PowerPoint.
And, and I, and I heard you and I, and I understand, I, I, you know, I, I understand. You know, and, and again. All I can do is present the information I had in time and I, and again. I looked at the, the, the presentation you were talking about. All I had was the information that was there. I, I could see what was, you know, were there. I can't, I don't really.
Going out of information is now it's, it's, you know, coming.
Later, rather than. The narrative has changed over time.
Well, I, I mean, the, I mean, you, you, you do get the fact that this is a project that's been in development, right? So we've been developing a project that. That's, that, um. I- is the most beneficial for the valley, right? That's what's been going on since the beginning is. You know.
But so, do you really feel in your heart of hearts that it's beneficial to the valley or is it beneficial to the lake?
The, the. The, the valley itself. If, if this, if the. If the other agencies want to. To put the water in the ground somewhere else, they have the, they have the right to do that. They can do that. So. This is the most cost effective project I can present to you. As a board, I can present to you what only pertains to Barwa. Is, is that piece. Everything outside of that, everything, the, how much water goes up into the aquifers and whoever wants to put it somewhere else. That's not it, that's not something I can do. I, I am, I am legally bound not to do that. I can only do this. I can only, and this is, that's the only charge this board has is to deal with. How we dispose of this water if we want, if we have an opportunity, the board has an opportunity to, to sell the water to. If they, if they so choose, they have the opportunity to sell the water. The, the agencies, CSD and the city and the county can come back and say. You know, we want our water. We're going to tell you how we're going to do it, what we're going to do with it and, and we, we can, it can be done a different way. It's fine. It's, it's totally fine. We're, we don't, you know, as Barra, we don't. That's not a problem for us either way, right? So. However, if the, if the, if the board chooses to, to change that, the way that happens or the, or the member agencies change. You know, they want to build a infrastructure to, to, if, if CSD wants to spend fifteen million dollars to build. Infrastructure to take it up into Van Dusen Ca- Canyon and, and spread it and then, and then recollect it. They are welcome to do that. They can, they can do that all day long. I am fine with that. But. Barwa cannot spend fifteen million dollars. It would have to be CSD's responsibility to do that. And. If, if you can, if, if CSD, I mean, if the city wants to, to do it, a, a similar project with finding different areas to spread their, their water, they can do that too. That's totally fine. Our charge, again, on this board is really just to, to look at. Um, the, the wastewater treatment a- and disposal and we were making the water to a, uh, to a. Cleanliness that it can be put in the lake. Or it can be, um, spread into spreading grounds. And collected by the, um, by the member agencies if they so choose. So that's, that's.
So, you know, just. You know, obviously we've been doing this a while. The, uh. Project has evolved a little bit here and a little bit there, so that if there was a. I call it a story at the time, then there was more requirements put on by. The Water Quality Board. I mean, things have changed. I mean, I don't think they had to do ultra filtration or UV was the initial.
Twenty-two, I think.
And that there might be other things that pop up in the environmental. It was kind of. How a building a house goes too, I hate to say, once you did the engineering stuff in, so. But, but the. Basic theory of it is the same for the most part. With rare exception, if you just mentioned we want to keep the water in Big Bear, it's. It's always been. The response back has been, yeah, figure out, keep the water. Now, we're just, we're just trying to figure it out. We're just trying to figure it out. And, and this can die again, absolutely can die again, but it's, we haven't signed on the dotted line. We haven't signed the, the Whitby alone. But what? We need to get those bits of information to make a good decision. And that's what we're trying to do.
If. Say CSD all of a sudden won the lottery. And the water's already been going into the lake. You know, we get an agreement with MWD, the water's going into the lake, but say five years from now, Larry buys a lottery ticket, gets all the money from CSD. But they say, no, we're changing, we're changing what we're doing, we don't want our potion put in the lake anymore. You know, it's five years down the river. Can they? Switch it or once it's going into the lake, is that it?
I would have to say, I'm sure there's a legal mechanism that can be put in place. Like, that would give. I mean. The JPA agreement says, no, they can't do that. Okay? But the, but I am sure. You know, through the process of negotiating a contract with, with MWD, we could put a, a clause. In there. To, um, to allow for additional, um. A- additional aquifer. Um, spreading or whatever, however CSD wanted to do it. I'm sure we could put a clause in there to, to. To, you know, not, not transport all the water to, to MWD.
And correct me if I'm wrong, and one of the, the cheapest way to do it was to put in the lake, pump it up. Put it in the aquifered sand canyon, we have an interconnect and send it over to CSD. Pipe's already there. So that was the cheapest. Way to transfer the water, but if CSD decides that they want to put it all in bottom lake. You know, how about it? Whatever you want to do with it, but.
Yeah.
It might not be the cheapest, cheapest method, but if, if that particular part was thought out, is it totally equitable? No, it's not at this moment, but that's, uh, was one of the methods to try to make it equitable. And, and again, these are the sort of, sort of things that hopefully we get. We get it so that, uh, CSD members feels it's equitable with the water distribution. City feels it's equitable. And if the question's answered and then. Then, um, make a decision. Of what to do and then, then also, once we make the decision, then we have to make a decision of the consequences.
Right.
If we, if, if it's voted down, now what are the consequences? And how do we deal with that?
Because, you know, grants.
I don't want to, I don't want to go there until we have to make those decisions because we don't know what they are. I don't know what's up.
Since there are no definitive actions being taken, can we move on to 10A?
Well, I was hanging on because you want to talk about equity and that's all we got there. Uh, if you'd like to move on, I'm, I'm good with that.
No, I've given up.
Okay.
Anything else before I move off 9A is, uh. Nothing else?
Can I just, can I just confirm for the main meeting, the only thing you want us to bring back through this discussion is the pool?
That's what I heard.
Okay.
Okay. Pay schedule.
Pay schedule, so 10A. Um, so. This is the, the, the cola we're presenting, it was already included in the, the calls were already included in the budget. Um, the color adjustments were already included in the, um, in the approved budget. Um, the, uh, it's part of the, the MOU agreement that we have in place. Um, that the agency considered, they don't have to approve, but they consider the cola. For our, uh, employees. Um, and that, and this is done on a yearly basis and that's what's in front of the, the board to consider. Adopting the, the adjusted pay schedule.
Three blocks.
Already budgeted, of course.
Correct.
It's already in the budget, which has been approved.
Would it be possible to get an updated personnel chart?
Sure.
My book is at least three years old and you've created new positions and. Proposed new position.
Yes.
Can you just email that to us?
Yes, yeah, it's on, it's on our website as well. Do you want the link or do you want the actual document?
Just, you send me the link is fine. Are we okay with that?
So what you want is a motion to approve the pay schedule?
That's correct.
Move to approve.
Motion, do a second.
A second.
Move the second, the discussion for the discussion. Add the parts in the sign-in, remember where the fuck about to speak on this. Please. Yes.
On the pay schedule?
On the pay schedule.
Before we take a vote.
No.
No, come on, I will, we'll get your information.
So this is, this is the pay schedule bill.
Pay schedule, yes.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a cola, we've changed for the pay schedule.
I'm sorry, yeah, we're.
Well, hopefully we'll fix it.
Yeah, we're, we're having technical difficulties. We're done with replenish, yes.
Okay. No discussion, your call.
Director Russo. Director Segovia.
Hi.
Director Walsh.
Hi.
And Vice Chair Harris.
Hi. Adam eleven, eleven A, General Manager comments.
I have no additional comments. I've spoken enough.
Okay. Uh, Governey Board comments. Done. Hear me?
No.
All right.
We finally approved the standards for forever chemicals in water. That's a reason to change, it could change in a month. They have new standards, just the way the water standards could change on this whole project at any time.
Not at any time, no, that's a little different. But.
Um, they're changing the standards to the Gatorade that I like and they're going to actually, because of the color.
I, I, is that, and that's in California, right?
It's in California. It's in California and throughout Europe.
Okay.
Same there. Anyways. Um, that is it. We move to closed session on twelve H.
Okay. You're, you're either welcome to come or you can be where.
Uh, so we're backing up the session right now. In closed session, we have nothing reportable. That's what you're in the view.